Are you still leaving? Are you here for the whole meeting or are you still?
I think we brought it up at the last meeting.
Didn't you say you were leaving at like seven?
Good evening.
Recording in progress.
Good evening. It is six thirty-two and we are calling the Groton Town Council. Committee of the Whole Regular Meeting on October eighth, two thousand twenty-four to order. We have the roll call. We have everybody present except for Council Boardland and she is on her way in. So we should expect her momentarily. We have Calendar and Communications. Council Mayor, do you have anything you would like to share?
Well, not right now.
Thank you. Council Pacino.
I do not have anything to share.
Okay, Council Russ.
No report.
Council Jones.
Oh, nothing.
Council McBride.
I'll stay consistent. Nothing to report.
Thank you. Council Guyaski. Council Parker.
Nothing to report.
All right, I just, I'm sorry, but I'm breaking the chain. Just want to remind everybody that next week, our town council meeting on the fifteenth is moved to October twenty-second. So we will not be having a meeting next week.
No, Tuesday ninth.
I'm sorry, the twenty-second is moved to the twenty-ninth. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. Twenty-second is moved to the twenty-ninth. So, and very quickly, I want to let everybody know that LeAnn Obree is the new Chair of the Beautification Committee. So I just want to give that announcement. Okay, moving on. Approval of Minutes. Council Parker.
Make a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four. So move.
Second, Jones.
All right, moved by Parker, seconded by Jones. Are there any corrections? All right, not seeing anybody. We will move on to vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions. That passes eight to zero to zero. New business, we have two zero two four dash eight six nine, the Groton Public Schools DODIA MCASP grant. And this is on page, hold on one second. On page ten. Council Guyaski, would you like to take that motion?
Yeah. Motion to recommend a resolution to approve the Board of Education's acceptance of the DODEA Military Connected Academic and Support Program, MCASP grant in the amount of one million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars and to refer the matter to RTM per Rule six point five dash three. So move.
Second, Pacino.
Okay, moved by Guyaski, seconded by Pacino.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would just like to state for the record that I do have a family financial interest in the schools. However, since my family member does not personally gain from this, I'm still eligible to vote on for it and I will be participating.
Thank you very much. So we do have people here from the schools if you would like to ask questions. And they're going to come up to the microphones.
Good evening, everyone.
Would you like to introduce yourselves?
I just wanted Susan Austin, Superintendent of Groton Public Schools. And I want to thank John Burt and the council for having us in so soon. I really appreciate it. I was going to orient you a little bit. I know there's a lot of acronyms. So Department of Defense Education Activity is the group that we've worked with for ten years and we've received, this is the eighth federal grant that we've received in the ten years. Shannon Weigel is our Grants Director and she, we would love to come back sometime and let you know of all the different grants that we've received with her support. It's just really amazing. We're always looking to. So this particular grant, two thousand twenty-four, is called Lifelong Learners Global Scholars, Extending the Reach of International Baccalaureate Education for All Students. And it's really, as an international baccalaureate global district, Groton, students have many opportunities for rigorous and relevant courses, high-quality instruction. And with our intra-district magnets at the elementary that really coincide with the career pathways, we're really providing, I think, an excellent education for our kids to think about college, but also very much career readiness. I think one of the proudest moments was being at Grasso Tech and having two students sign on for a job with a hard hat at EB prior to their graduating. So we are really looking to enhance those career pathways. And IB has a program at the high school called IB Careers Program. So with that being said, I think you remember the other federal grant that came our way, the Magnet School Assistance Grant with LEARN, which was a five-million-dollar grant that created the STEM NYPD Magnet School, which is now Groton Middle School. So we still have that enhancement. But this is going to be really continuity in that work and consistency for the next five years. It amounts to about two hundred and fifty thousand per year and it really is all about professional learning. There are some positions for the five years, but once the five years is up, you don't need the position. So it's like a project director, an evaluator. Those are all required by DOD. And then we have some, a couple of tutors. I think every grant that I've looked for, I tried to put in those tutors because we did lose a lot, as you remember, last year. So we're still trying to regroup from that and we've really been pretty successful with that. So that's also in there. But the majority of this is professional learning for our teachers. Some of it will be in-house and some will be out of district. So we're really looking forward to that. And I think you know Fitch is one of three high schools in the whole state that's an international baccalaureate. And a lot of people don't realize that really this is, this grant really is around the work of our Excellence Equity and Efficiency, which was started with the Groton two thousand twenty. And this extension of international baccalaureate with all that we have and really looking into the primary year sets a foundation for that rigorous education and opens access. Another proud moment is that Groton Public Schools at Fitch High School, we've increased the number to over, close to twelve hundred students who are in AP, IB, ECE and the Careers Program. And career pathways now, every freshman picks a pathway. So we know that they're going to have a pathway during their high school. They can switch it if they want to switch it, but it's there. So I think this is all exciting work. I get very excited about it. So, you know, it really is sustainable and once the grant is gone, there's really no other contribution that we have, except I think there's maybe fourteen thousand in the five years that is related to some benefits. But Shannon, did you want to add anything to it?
No, I think you summed it up.
And I have to tell you that DOD has really supported us. They've been really impressed. I've got Val Nelson, who's a project director, and Ben Moon, who's another project director. And they really have encouraged us to do this and to consider international baccalaureates since a lot of military children, when we go to these annual meetings which are required, have IB. And so it's really wonderful for them to continue that. So we have been definitely encouraged and the evaluations and the monitoring that comes with it is an extra bonus for us because it really helps to monitor our students' growth. And we've seen growth with these grants. So, you know, that teacher development really equates to student performance and we need to continue to grow that. So that's my long-winded explanation.
Let me just ask very quickly, will there be any staffing that you will, new staffing that you will be hiring with this grant? And if so, will that continue after the grant?
So the project director and the evaluator, there's three tutors, and then there's some stipends for the IB leadership, but those all go away at the end of the five-year grant.
Council Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Mayor, Superintendent, thank you for coming and congratulations on this grant. I just had a question for you and for Shannon. I think, Shannon, this is the presentation you did the other day for the Board of Ed. So, and the large grant-funded projects in progress, there was Career Pathways, World Language, and Magnet Schools. Which one does this fit into?
So this is a new DODIA grant. So those three that you just listed are projects that are currently in progress. And Val Nelson oversees, she manages two of the grants and Ben Moon manages the third. So we will be hiring a project direct, an additional project director for this newest grant.
So which category does this one go in? Is there, what's the name of the new category?
So DODIA really just offers two different categories of competitive grants. This one, that acronym, MCASP, is really, it's like a general education grant. So the projects need to be focused on academic improvement. You can ask for some like behavioral supports, but it, but it's pretty, it's open-ended. And then they have, they offer a second grant program, which is specifically focused on world language. So we do have one of those going right now. And then the other three fall within the sort of general academic improvement.
And these kind of grants, are they something that after the five years you can renew again for them or do they kind of end?
Every year. Every year we can apply.
We can apply for it every year, but, but they are project grants. So each application, you know, includes a, like a twenty-page proposal with a project that will be evaluated and it's like centered around a theme. So each year, you know, a large group of people within the district and the board come together and kind of pick a topic that we're going to, a focus area for that grant. So each, since we've been doing this over the past ten years, the grants are kind of interconnected. They kind of build on each other each year and that's something that DODIA has been really impressed with Groton for doing that. And we're kind of unique in that way and we're kind of held up as an exemplar district across the country for doing that. But yeah, each, each project has a focus area. So one will be on literacy, then the math and STEM, and this one has a focus on IB.
Okay. And I think, Susan, you had said this is one of three towns or communities that receive this grant. Is that?
Oh, there's many, many communities across the nation. Ledgerd has received two, so because they're another large military district, not as large as we are, but we are one of the largest in southeastern communities.
So it goes to just military communities?
We're the largest in northeast.
We're the largest in northeast.
In the northeast, yes. So I think there's about, I want to say maybe fifty that are awarded across the country each year.
And we're one of three in the state.
Right. And the world language really connects and I can explain that because in an international baccalaureate program, it's really important to have world language. We have it now in grades three, four, and five, Spanish and French. And that was through our world language grant and there's been a lot of professional learning around that. Increased seals of biliteracy are a result of that. And also some of our newcomers coming in, our students, we're assessing them right away. And some of them are fluent in their language and can read and write and they automatically get a seal of biliteracy when they come. So we're really looking for those opportunities for our kids. But that is very, that's an example of how it kind of coordinates with this one.
Okay, all right. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burt, did you have something you wanted to say? All right, at six forty-three, Council Boardland has arrived at the meeting. Council Parker.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. When does it start and what is the end date of the grant?
So we received the news on the twenty-eighth of September and I think they sent it to us immediately. So this is the planning year. So this is the year that we really take the time to plan things out and get things organized. There will be possibly some professional learning in this year that's occurring, but it's really the planning year. So, you know, it, it can happen as soon as we can get, get it started.
But we're kind of waiting to go through this process first.
So technically, they start October first. So once, yeah, we've gone through the approval process and they go until May thirty-first, five years later. So this one will end May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-nine.
Okay. And so, so you'll have to report out each year. Is it quarterly reporting or is it just?
It is, yes.
Quarterly and then annual. And our board is really interested in that too because that's just another piece of information that shows growth for the kids and that's what we're really interested in.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Council Boardland.
Oh, thank you. So with this grant, this is with the three bullet points that this grant will be covering, is what is being stated here, presented in this?
So what I discussed was that this grant is connected to several others, but it definitely, one of the things that we were able to do at Fitch High School was we had, Department of Defense gave us a grant called National Math Science Initiative and we did a lot of work with all of our AP teachers. We also got a grant for dual enrollment. So with all the work that we've done so far, we've been able to increase our numbers from about nine hundred, eight hundred, nine hundred, I think there was a year of seven hundred, to about twelve hundred students who've now enrolled and are assessed in either AP, International Baccalaureate, IB, ECE, which is UConn credit. And now the work that they're doing is aligning those things. So a student could get a diploma or a certificate in IB and they can get credit either through taking the AP test or getting UConn credit. So we're just looking for as many opportunities as we can for students to be college and career-ready.
And how many kids graduated last year with an IB diploma?
So there were a handful. I actually have something coming out in board notes that has a chart for you and I know I give you the weekly update, so you'll get that. So it has the history of all of those things and how many kids have been part of it. So you'll be getting that piece of information.
Okay, and so the DODIA military connection in that grant is based off of what? The enrollment numbers that we had from the previous years?
Yes, it really coincides with our Impact Aid numbers. And the more students that we have that are military-connected, the better funding we get, the town gets with the Impact Aid. And then we get through the supplemental and then this, these different competitive grants.
I'm pretty familiar with it because both my student, my, my children, both were military students that were part of that for, until their father retired. So then we fell off as two people in the numbers. But my concern is that the enrollment for IB is extremely low, I feel, in the amount of money that we put into it. I think it's a great program for some, but not for all. As a person who has a son now in college, IB, they just rolled right over those credits. They didn't do anything with them in college. So it only is good depending on which college you go to. So for me, looking back, it should have been AP or ECE.
Well, that's why we're doing the alignment.
Can I just finish first before? So that's, that's my concern. My other concern as a military family and currently as a military family still, with my son being in the military, is that these monies are coming based off of enrollment of our military students. And when I look at the numbers from when I was looking at them, I don't have hard data, but I'd love to see down the road how many children are actually in the IB program.
Yes, I can answer that.
I'd like to finish talking first and then you can take your turn. Because I have a time limit, sorry. And so that's a concern to me, that we're funneling a ton of money that is military-driven, based on our number of military students, into some programs that are not hitting a large amount of military kids. And as a firm believer, as a former military spouse, as well as a mom of a son who's active duty, one of my other dual roles of getting involved is making sure that we see that we're really making sure that money's going to affect those students. It's great to say we have it in the town of Groton, but I want to see that money really going in to help them. So I'm going to obviously vote this in, but I really hope that we look at this. A lot of the military families I spoke to are not, are concerned with the lack of honors-level programs because we have a lot of kids that are transient and they need that building block and it's not accepted. So I am concerned about the, the implementation of these DODIA funds to a hundred number of students versus a broader number of students that are really affecting military. So I would like to see that improve. Funding field trips, that's one thing. Enhancing, you know, emotional learning, I think that affects military children. But IB across the board is not, I'm not seeing a large number of IB students in that program overall. And again, other, other high schools in the area I spoke to, we, it's apples and oranges. If you have AP and ECS, that's what our colleges are looking for. This IB is another caveat, but it's not the gold standard. And that is my concern. It, no, from what the colleges are saying, they're not really, they want the AP and ECS. So, let me just finish my, I'm on a time, it's going to beep in a minute, you'll get your turn. But that's my concern. So, and the number of, of enrollment of our military kids being impacted by that. So it's a nice thing to have, but some of the higher-performing schools don't have IB and they're doing wonderful. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Would you like to respond?
Well, so we have the same percentage of military students that are taking IB classes as the rest of the students. So ten percent of the students at Fitch High School are taking IB classes and that's true for the military students also. We ran those numbers as we were putting the application together. As far as colleges, whether they look favorably on IB, I'm sorry, Council Boardland, but that's not correct. I mean, when students are applying to colleges with an IB diploma program certificate, which is different than taking IBDP classes. IBDP is on the same level as AP. And the IB diploma program, that application gets put in a completely separate pile. That is the highest credit that, program, certification that you can get from a high school at this time. So I don't, I'm sorry, but your, your information is wrong about that.
I'd like to also add that we have an NYPD for all children, grades six through ten. Every single one of our students has an IB education at that middle school and into Fitch High School. That lays the foundation for success as they move forward. So I would say that there are thousands of children impacted by IB. And in addition, I would say that the children who do take both IB and AP courses, there's hundreds of them at the high school every year. So, you know, I, I do believe it's another arena for them and especially now that we're aligning all of this so that it does make sense, so that they're getting credit and they're able to pursue a diploma or a career pathway program.
Do you have a point of information, your question?
Can you explain what NYPD is?
Middle Years Program. I'm sorry, these acronyms.
Can you repeat the statements that you just made with that? Because I was trying to catch up with what the acronym is.
Middle Years Program is all of our students in grades six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. And they do a personal project at the end and they just are amazing. And next time those personal projects, I'll give you guys an invite to come and see them because they really do amazing work, kids do.
And another clarifying? Clarifying question?
Yes.
Your question?
And those are only IB program students or all students?
All students are part of this. Every Groton student is part of this program.
Thank you for the clarification.
My point of information?
Your point of information, your question?
May I ask?
Your question?
Yes. I believe you said that it was going to be aligned together, so that was a dual information with the IB program with colleges. Could you explain that?
So dual enrollment means that you can have the program from UConn, the curriculum from UConn, kind of aligned with the IB program, or you can do it with AP as well. And we've done a lot of work. Our teachers have really done a lot of work putting those two together. So if you've got an AP diploma, there's the potential of getting additional credit. A lot of universities will give them credit, college credit, because they are an IB diploma candidate or they have an IB course. So there is credit bearing with colleges. But it could, it could vary from college to college. So we would like them to certainly have college credit going in.
Thank you, because that was the statement you made as Council Boardland was coming in. I just wanted to rethink that. Thank you.
Your Council Boardland.
Oh, thank you. So if there's, was there even ten that graduated with IB programs last year?
So last year, we had a hundred and forty students taking IB diploma classes. So I don't know exactly if that was seventy-nine in the senior class and seventy in the junior class, but a hundred and thirty-nine students took IBDP classes. Number of students that did the entire diploma program, which is different than taking IBDP classes, is usually like between ten and twenty. A couple of years ago, we had a, our highest number, and we had thirty-two kids, I believe, that year. But it usually hovers between ten and twenty because those students need to also complete an extended essay, which is basically like a college-level term paper. They need to participate in a community service project and they need to complete a few other requirements.
Okay, yeah, because that's my thing is if like ten kids are graduating per year with an IB diploma program, there might be more taking classes, you know, it, it's not really a broad spectrum of the military student, in my opinion. That's my opinion. Also, you know, as far as IB diploma program, when my son was looking at colleges and picking where he was going, from UConn to all the different areas for engineering, they told him, don't bother, basically, the IB diploma program wasn't going to change much. And it really does vary from school to school. There could be a handful. But I'd love to see that list in the future because a lot of schools, depending on the kid's track, I just don't want people to be, I don't want to stay fooled by it, but to think that guaranteed AP and ECS will be college. But all IB diploma credits, depending on your track, they told us, depending on the math and all the other accelerated programs, it was not going to transfer into college credit. There are some colleges, yes, I agree, but not every college. And I just think that needs to be clear, much clearer to parents as well. But we're not even graduating, in my opinion, a hundred kids with an IB diploma program. So that's where I'm just, again, I'll vote for this tonight, but I'm just simply saying that I feel we really need to be looking at those DODIA funds and making sure that they're impacting military students at an astronomical number, since that's the funds coming in and the reason because you're getting it because of those numbers. We should make sure that we're hitting more than fifty percent of those students on that sweep. That's just my opinion. That would be good, good grant use of money that's coming to serve our military. Military children overwhelmingly suffer from gaps in education coming from other districts like Hawaii and other areas that may be not performing as high. And so other districts that are, I looked around, Impact AIDS in different states that have it down Washington and things like that, are really diving that money into making sure they're closing achievement gaps for those military children because that's really going to set them up for success. A large portion of children coming out of district won't have a chance to benefit this unless they come from day one. That's just my thought. It's my opinion, but I'd love to see the numbers later. But again, not all colleges take IB diploma, diploma programs. I just want that to be clear. And if you take an IB class, it does not equate to a college credit at all colleges. But an AP class, and you take the exam, you pass that, does. And so it's just, I am concerned about that process. Again, I will vote on tonight. It's obviously free money, but I do think that we should be making sure we're using that money to hit a broader number of our military students. That's all. That's all I have. Thank you.
I just want to, sorry, make it clear again that this is not specifically for the diploma program, but to, but it's for the IBDP classes to increase the number of students in IBDP CP classes and to also enhance the NYPD program. So those teachers are in need of new professional learning and they will receive this free of charge to the district and the town through this grant.
I had also mentioned.
Sorry, go.
Oh, I'm sorry, you still have fourteen seconds.
No, I was going to say, I'm all for them getting the training because they're required because they don't have a choice of having the IB program that's here. So it's here and we're using it. But I just don't think it's, in my opinion, is hitting a broad number of students. We could go without the IB program and we could be just successful, if not even more successful as other districts. That's all.
So I know you missed my intro, but we were really encouraged by DOD because there are many other districts. We were in California. We saw everywhere we've gone across the United States for these annual meetings, they've had Department of Defense Education Activities have supported international baccalaureate. And we do, in our annual reporting and quarterly reporting, we are always monitoring the military children and all, all the other children. And our military children for the past ten years have superseded the average. So just want you to know that they're actually doing really fine when they are in Groton schools. So it's something to be proud of.
Thank you. Well, let me just ask real quickly. The grant is titled Lifelong Learners Global Scholars, Extending the Reach of IB Education to All Groton Students. And this is, when you applied for this grant, this is what you said would be used for, correct?
That's right.
And this is a decision for the Board of Ed. It's not basically a town council decision on how you take these funds and spend them. It is more of a Board of Education and Superintendent discussion. I don't, I personally don't think it's up to me to tell you to use it on IB or what other other programs you may have. I think that's more on to the Board of Education and their purview than mine. I just want to make sure, some simple things of if you're hiring staff, once the grant expires, will you be keeping them on or will that be the end of their employment? I am happy that you applied for this and that you received it. This is additional money that goes beyond our budget, you know, to help in our school system. So I thank you for taking the extra time to go out there and search for these funds and to, to achieve them, to receive them. And I thank you and I think other comments that were made here tonight, me personally, that's on the Board of Ed, not my purview. So financial side of it on the town, I, I thank you.
Thank you.
A point of clarification?
Point of order. There's no such thing as a point of clarification.
I'd like to, well, I'm doing a point of information.
Your question?
I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, that other folks up here were saying that it couldn't be used for certain things. Is that what, I'm just trying to understand because I don't think that was the intent of what I was saying.
I'm not doing your intent.
Oh, okay, not mine. Okay. Oh, okay, not mine. Okay, so you're just saying in general?
In general, I don't think it's up to us to tell them how to spend their money. When it comes to grant money that they have, we don't tell them how to spend some other things, and it's on them. We can question things as we like, but.
Yeah, okay, that's all I'm saying. It just could be a candid question. Thank you.
But your point of information cannot go into more, it's a very simple, point of information is a very simple question, a clarifying question, basically. It's more, this is becoming more of a debate.
I was just clarifying what you were saying.
Council Russ?
Thank you. I just want to say, thank you so much for going after this grant as a.
Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon. I've done small grants, so God bless you, because this is a lot.
She's great at it.
I just want to say, as a military family, we always appreciated the fact that my children had choices. So thankfully, we were in the Groton district most of their lives. And they did partake in AP classes, but had the option of IB. And I love the fact that Groton does allow all of that and the fact that there's now career pathways as well is so important to me. I thank you for putting in our, you know, that these are positions that will be coming in and that they know they will be going out. And other than that, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more question. Sorry.
Nope, I did not.
Thank you. One more question. So your three bullet points were, I understand the first one. The second one was fund student field trips and programs. Can you kind of just touch on that one? Like, what does that look like?
So in several of our grants, we have had the partnerships with community. So we, that's a big deal, especially with our inter-district magnets, all the way through Fitch High School, whether it's Project O or NESTS. And so, as you know, with the new bus transportation contract, it's become much more expensive for these field trips. So we actually have put in funds for those field trips going out with partners and transportation. So it'll just give us a little more. And I think it was specifically for elementary, or did we say?
No, left it open.
Left it open-ended. So it's just another place for funding, not in our operation budget outside it. And we actually have done that in several grants.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Parker, did you have your hand up?
I did. May I ask another point of information? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is it a point of information, or are you taking your turn? This would be your second.
I'll take my second. Thank you. It's probably, it's going to be short, but, thank you. DODA money is not only for military, but people who work at electric boats, so defense.
Yes.
So it's not just.
They're connected to the military.
They're connected because some of the families are not military, but they work for Department of Defense.
And even our families on federal property, like at the casinos, those all count. That's why I've done that film that probably drives everybody crazy with the captain, saying, fill out the forms, families. And it's so important that they, everybody fills out their form because they may not be understanding that their form could count. So we want every family to fill out their form because it could be federal, they live or work on federal property, or they're directly, you know, in the Navy and are active duty, or they were, happen to be on a submarine on October 1st, which is the date that we do our enrollment. And so there's lots of ways that they can count, so it matters. And that's why we got the 1.250, which is the biggest one you can get.
So hopefully everyone turned in their forms.
We're getting there.
Okay. Because I remember my dad having, my dad worked at EB, so we had to fill out the form. So it's not just military families. And then all families are impacted one way or another with education. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we're going to vote on this one. 2024-869 Groton Public Schools DODA M.S.A.P. Grant. The motion on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Much appreciated.
So it is 7:06. We're going to leave the committee of the whole. And we're going to go into the Town Council Special Meeting Agenda at 7:06. Roll call, all are present. New business. 2024-869-1 Groton Public Schools DODA M.C.A.S.P. Grant. Councilor McBride, would you like to take that one?
Certainly. Make a motion to propose a resolution approving the Board of Education acceptance of a DODA Military Connected Academic and Support Program Grant, being resolved to approve the Board of Education's acceptance of a Department of Defense Education Activity DODA Military Connected Academic and Support Program grant in the amount of $1,250,000 for the project period from October 1st, 2024, through May 31st, 2029, and to refer the matter to the representative of town meeting per Rule 6.5.3.
Second. Moved by McBride, seconded by Russk. We just had a conversation about this one. Council Board of Ed.
Thank you. I just want to clarify what I was just stating again, because it's, some of the comments, I basically am stating, I'm all in support of supporting the teachers who need the program. Obviously, if the programs are in place. But I am concerned, you know, does the town really need an IB program financially, with or without the scholarships? I'm in full support of folks seeking scholarships, but do have concerns that, you know, is it the right fit for our community on a larger level? And I am aware that it's a Board of Ed decision, but we have a chance to comment as a council about how we feel, and that's strictly what I was doing. But I will be supporting it tonight. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2024-869-1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero.
Motion to adjourn the Town Council meeting.
We will adjourn by Parker, seconded by Gajewski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. It is 7:09 for adjournment, and we are back at our Committee of the Whole meeting at 7:09. Up next, 2024-94-2 All-Terrain Vehicle Ordinance. This is on page 13. Counselor, I don't know if I should have Council Russ take this one, because she's the chair. So let's have Council Russ take this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2024-94 All-Terrain Vehicle Ordinance. Motion to recommend a resolution setting a public hearing for December 3rd, 2024, for the All-Terrain Vehicle Ordinance. So moved.
Seconded by Pacino.
Moved by Russ, seconded by Pacino. Would you like to give us an overlay of?
Sure. So this was referred to the Town Council back in 2023 by Councilor, then Councilor Edward Jacob. It came to the Public Safety Committee after a meeting, a Committee of the Whole here in January of 2024. At the Public Safety Committee, we reviewed an ordinance of another town, approved it with the understanding that the attorney would take a look at it. What you are seeing before you is what Attorney Cody looked at and sent forward. So that is just of it.
Town Manager Burt, would you like to add anything?
No, just to remind people, this came out of, we continue to see these street takeovers and illegal use of these type of vehicles. Vehicles include all-terrain vehicles, motorcycles, motorized go-karts, mopeds, and several things exempted, like golf carts on a golf course, ATVs in your yard, that type of thing. But just since some rules on it to create safety for all of those others on the roads. And the State Attorney General's Office did look at this, as well as our attorney. And of course, Chief Fasaro has endorsed it, and I do too.
I have a clarifying question. It says mini motorcycles. You had mentioned mopeds. Because mopeds, I believe, are legal on the street with a license. Is that correct?
Yes, it's only if you're doing anything illegal with it, yes.
All right. But mini motorcycles, is what you're saying. Okay. All right. Council Board of Ed?
Just wanted to clarify, so this would only affect the town side, right?
Yeah, it does not affect the city or Groton, long point.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Good point. I meant to mention that.
Council Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had two quick questions. The first one was, I'm not, would you need like a special license, like a motorcycle license? Or is it just a stereotypical driver's license? Or do you even need a license to operate an ATV?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't believe so.
Don't believe so.
Because they're not street-ready, so.
Okay. Oh, because they're not street. Okay. That, thank you. That answers my question. And then I had a question on Article 4, Section. Section G, it's the last paragraph. It says, "No gasoline or motor vehicle service station owner or operator shall promote any operator of an all-terrain vehicle or dirt bike to fuel." So does that mean that if someone brings the ATV to it and just fills it up there directly? But I guess my question is, what's stopping somebody from getting one of those red cans and just filling it up, putting it in the back of their car, and then filling it up that way?
Sure. You know, it's funny, as I was actually going to mention this during the public hearing, that I just wanted to clarify a little bit that it's a direct servicing of, you know, direct fueling of one of these vehicles. There's nothing you can do if somebody takes gas or does anything else. This should be clarified to be direct fueling if they drive up in it, you know. You could have it trailered or something else, of course. But I was going to note that in the public hearing to make, to recommend a change.
That's it for me, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Council McBride?
I'll probably wait till the public hearing to make comments, some good things.
Well, before, like, is there anything in here? Is it just, we're just setting the public hearing. Is that correct?
Yes, just public hearing.
Can we make amendments to any of this if we would like to be prior to going to public hearing? So this would be the time, if we wanted to make a change, to change it before it got to the public hearing?
Yeah, I guess my question, just for my own.
Let me just clarify, if it got to a public hearing and we wanted to change it afterwards, we would have to start the.
As long as you say it or reference it at the public hearing, you can still make the change.
All right.
What you get is get through it and never have to reset. Then you'd have to go backwards if you made a significant change.
Significant changes would have to come back to the drawing board.
But as long as it's mentioned at the public hearing.
Okay, maybe I'll ask a question, and this is just my own knowledge. A moped, are they, usually it's under 50 cc's, they're not counted? Is that excluded in here, or is that included? Because that was my understanding, that you could drive a moped if it was under 50 cc's. I think that may be where it's on page 16, less than 50 cubic centimeters, paragraph 2.
Which page?
Page 16, which is page 3 of the document. Second paragraph down talks about mini motorcycles. Last sentence, "is propelled by an engine having a piston displaced with a less than 50 cubic centimeters," which I think is the 50 cc's I'm referring to. So mopeds under 50 cc's would not be confiscated under this, would be my understanding.
Correct. Yes, that's what I'm saying. Long as they're operating as they should.
Yeah, yeah, okay. That's all. Thank you.
Yes, correct.
So on page 19, under exemptions, the provision of this ordinance shall not apply to, one, the operation of an all-terrain vehicle, a motorcycle moped, or motorized go-kart on premises owned or leased by the owner of the vehicle. So there's definitely some provisions in here. And that's on. It said something, I'm sorry.
Registration.
Yeah. Effective registration was number 2. Sorry, to the operation of an ATV, motorcycle, moped, or motorized vehicle in any organized contest. I want to say it was under here, because I remember asking that question. Please feel free to go on. I'll try to find it.
Well, in the section, I'm going to take a moment here. The section that was just read in the article exemptions, it is section 19. And section 2, "to the operation of an all-terrain vehicle, a motorcycle, moped, or motorized go-kart in any categorized content as long as such vehicle holds a valid effective registration awarded by Connecticut or other state or United States." A moped does not get registered. You don't register a moped. You can't register a moped. Mr. Burt?
Yeah, I'd have to double-check that. I'm not licensed, certainly, but.
My son had a moped. He had a driver's license, and I called DMV and he cannot register. And I think there's somebody else on the council that has a moped, and I don't know if they could have ever gotten it registered. I don't think they can.
That's what I was saying as well, because a moped is generally under 50 cc's, so you can't get a, you can't get a registration for it.
Right, so on this section 2 of it, when it states, I'm not sure if we should. I don't know what the issues are with a moped that we might be seeing in our community as street takeovers. But I think it's, we might want to review that before we go any further.
Council Board of Ed?
Also too, I had looked at one point of getting a motor scooter for the summer. To be able to scoot from my house down to Eastern Point and not take my car and use it for like different things, and that does not have to be registered. You have to have a license if it's under a certain size. So moped versus motor scooter are also, you know, different as well. I don't know, to the town manager, I mean, we're not going to be eliminating motor scooters, are we?
No, the whole point of this is anything that you act illegally in, it kind of covers everything. I mean, if you do something illegal with a moped or a larger, it's going to cover it all.
But I think it's also banning mopeds in our community.
I just want to make sure motor scooters are not going to be, people use those as, and they don't have to be registered under certain.
It doesn't ban mopeds. What it does is, generally speaking, all these things are covered. Meaning if you do anything illegal, there's some exemptions that just are not even covered whatsoever, like a golf cart on a golf course. Then you have to look, what's the prohibited uses? In terms of going on sidewalks, no motorized, if you look at A under 4, what are the, it doesn't prohibit those items, it prohibits certain actions. So, "No person shall operate or cause to be operated an all-terrain vehicle, motorcycle, moped, et cetera, upon any sidewalk or pedestrian walkway." It goes through the things that are legal to do that you're going to cause, basically the street takeover type things.
All right, so, yeah, so it's not banning them really.
It's not banning them, no.
It's just making sure you're, you know, operating. Because I was just thinking, like, people use those in the summer, and you can scoot around and. All right, and also, my other question is, a lot of military folks have vehicles registered out of state, and they don't have to turn them over, they don't have to change their residency. So will this, will they be protected if there's a different law or reasoning in a different state? So say I'm from Texas, and the law there is something different, and they have a plate for something. Again, they're protected as long as they're not operating illegally on sidewalks and things, it wouldn't matter.
Right.
So their laws would be protected, because some of them have to register certain things that maybe we don't. I just didn't know how that would work.
I mean, if they break the law, they break the law. Ignorance of the law is an excuse, but yes.
The only question I have.
Basically, the only reason for this, most of these things already exist, a lot of this. You know, you can't drug drive. That's one of the things. It's really just so you have access to quicker, to the confiscation and disposal and for those fees. You can't charge those fines without this ordinance. That's really just, just a bit of a deterrent.
So it's really not banning anything?
No.
It's really just saying, we're not going to tolerate people operating them illegally?
Right.
And in areas.
These things already exist. It's just be able to create a fine system.
So you can, okay, thank you for clarifying.
Council Jones?
In number C of the prohibited uses, it says, "No person shall operate or cause to be operated a motorcycle, moped, on town-owned land, included but not limited to schools, parks, playgrounds, recreation, open space, other than on public streets." We, what are we, what are we doing about all the other open space?
We don't allow motorized vehicles on other open spaces that are town-owned, outside of driveways and parking lots.
Our land trust lands?
Well, you can do, maintenance vehicles are exempted. So anything with a maintenance, that type of thing is already exempted. But I can't drive onto, you know, now, that, that's not, when they mean public land, they mean our type of public land, like government-owned.
But, but we're not looking at like Avalonia Land or Goseland, or how about?
They can allow what they want. That's still private land.
Including state, like Bluff Point and Haley Farm?
Right. If they have a rule contrary, but this would prohibit it otherwise. But again, well, it doesn't private any state properties anyways. They're separate, but.
Do we, and the enforcement part of this is that we take it away, right? If that's, that's the enforcement?
Well, usually for evidence, if you catch them, you're going to take it away at first. If you see referenced under, of course, you have the fines, three levels of fines for each instance, which is the max, 1,000, 1,500, 2,000. But if you drop down to, on page 21, to the final paragraph, kind of in the middle, you'll see a reference. see a reference to Connecticut General Statute, section 54 dash 33G. That's actually a separate part of the law. It says exactly what you have to do for, to go through the confiscation and disposal process, sale process. You have to petition the, you have to petition the courts, they have to have a public hearing, et cetera. There's a whole process for this.
Okay.
It's a kind of an expedited process, but it's still a process.
Can I just clarify what, a clarifying question on this, on the section C. It says, "No person shall operate or cause to be operated a motorcycle or moped on town-owned land, including but not limited to schools, parks, playgrounds, recreation fields, and open space, other than on public streets."
Point of order, please. Not clarifying question, you were asking a point of information.
Sorry, point of information. Other than on public streets, through fairs and parking areas, except in emergencies such as attending to the health or safety of persons' wildlife. So, you're saying that you're allowed to go to the school and a motorcycle? In the parking lot?
Right.
That's considered the public, a public road? Basically, a public?
Yeah. It says parking lots.
Public street, through fair.
Yeah, it says parking lots, yeah.
Okay. It's just not up on the fields or sidewalks? And that's what you're saying?
Now, of course, the schools can have maintenance vehicles doing that.
Right. Okay. Just want to clarify that, sorry.
Through the mayor, through the town manager, is there a reason we didn't put electric bikes in here? Some of the electric bikes can go fairly high in speed and power.
I don't know if we've heard much in the takeovers. Because I don't know if there's their definition in the law. I mean, look, I don't think that was expressly called out in the law, if I remember correctly, unless it falls under an existing law.
It's kind of like a loophole. You've got, it's the one class of vehicle that's not mentioned in here.
Point of information?
Your question?
Couldn't a bicycle, an electric bicycle, couldn't that be considered under 50 cc's? And would it be a moped technically?
It doesn't have an engine. As a motor. You wouldn't classify an electric bike by cc's, you'd classify it by horse mile.
And I can, I can find out information if that's possible to add in prior to the public hearing.
I think just because it's another class that's, you know, there's a lot of them around and, and especially places like Bluff Point, you see them all.
I would just have to see if the enabling legislation allows that or not. Yeah.
Are you all set?
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Merritt?
Point of information about approximately three, four, five years ago, and I keep hearing reference to Bluff Point and e-bikes. State of Connecticut declared that there was three forms of e-bikes as far as power goes, in one, two, and three, and the only one allowed at Bluff Point is the low-grade number one. If you want to reference that in this ordinance, you'd have to more or less choose the strength of the vehicle that you're referencing.
I'll do some research on it.
And they have their own rules down, down at Bluff Point in any state park.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor McBride?
I just have a point, a couple of clarification points, because I'm a little confused. Back, it's back to the moped situation. On page 15 and 16, in the ordinance or wherever this is, we define, you define dirt bike, we define all-terrain vehicle, then we define dirt bike, then we define mini motorcycle, and it mentions the engine having a 50 cubic centimeters. So, that seems straightforward, but then on page 19, we go into other definitions, and then we define all-terrain vehicle, motorcycle, and then we list motorized go-kart and moped. So, we're adding it to a couple of definitions, but this moped doesn't have the over or under 50 cc's, so not a point of discussion.
The whole point is any motorized vehicle to not break these rules. We want to be wide capturing.
So, does that mean, I guess I'm just back to, maybe legal can review, because I think it gets back to a moped under 50 cc's is different than a moped over 50 cc's.
I don't think we want to treat them differently, though, for this. Because we're not banning anything, we're just saying that you can't do anything illegal. So, that would apply regardless of any motorized vehicle you're on, unless you guys want to change that, but I think the intention should be more all encompassing.
Okay. I think I understand. Thank you.
Counselor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm thinking that we got a list of vehicles here. Maybe we can just add at the end, or at the beginning, not limited to, then the list of vehicles. And then that would catch anything else that happens to be, that comes about. Because it really doesn't matter what the vehicle is. It could be a golf cart. If you're on the street with a golf cart and you're doing donuts in an intersection, and you're part of a street takeover, it doesn't matter. It's, it's, any vehicle that is part of a vehicle, a street takeover is subject to this. Doesn't matter if it's a golf cart, a minibike, or whatever you're in or on. It's not about the, it's not about the individual vehicle. It's not telling people, you can't take your moped to go down the street and come back with groceries. I'm good.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe, are we using the ordained? This is what we're enacting on page 19. Under Article one findings, it is found that the operation of motorbikes, all-terrain vehicles, and similar off-road vehicles can result in serious bodily harm. I believe that's covered. So, I don't think we need to add anything or add a, et cetera, to the line, because anything off-road that could be considered a vehicle that could be used to do bodily harm, or serious bodily harm, is going to be included. And the statutes are very specific that the police officers are going to interpret. We're only setting this to set fines. Am I correct?
Correct. And have access to the expedited process for selling. As a deterrent, that's a deterrent, you know, for doing it.
So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
I, Counselor Russ?
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of go back to the moped issue, because what it says is, "No one shall operate a moped upon a sidewalk. No one shall operate a moped on town-owned land. No one shall operate a moped to create a nuisance." So, it's very specific. It's not, you can't drive a moped. It's, you can't drive a moped in this way. So, you can't drive a moped under the influence of alcohol or on privately-owned land. And that is Article four A, A, C, D, E, F. And I hope that alleviates some of the concern on this.
Okay, Counselor, are you all set? Yeah, I'm all set. Counselor Porterlin?
I, I kind of agree with Counselor Pacino in the fact that, you know, different things can be, you know, in, in general, you cannot, anything can become a nuisance. There was a recent video in California where people were on those hoverboards, and they were like linking arms and holding up traffic on roads and like protesting and causing a public nuisance. But it wasn't a motorbike, it was one of those two-wheel hoverboards. There's also those, well, it's, you put both feet on it, but they're more of a scooter. They're not a scooter in the sense like we think, like the ones you see on Cape Cod or Block Island, but those ones you just stand on, that you buy your kids that are non-motorized initially, but you can buy the ones that are electric now. People are using those recklessly. And there's been stuff about those. So, I just don't want people to get stuck on motorcycle and motorbike as the verbiage that can cause a nuisance. It's all of those things, and I think it was, you know, brought up, that at any point, to me, it's any operation of any form of motorized or movement, you know, vehicle or standing bore, you know, that you're causing a public nuisance on any street sidewalk, you know, which, you know, I think what, kind of I think I'm hearing what Counselor Pacino was saying was, you know, kind of everything. Like there have been street takeovers on those hoverboards, as well as those little scooter things that you, or innocent little scooters that kids play on. So, you know, it's not just mopeds as the, I don't know. I guess to the town manager, I don't know.
It'd be easy enough. It'd be easy enough for me to ask the attorney whether the initial sentence covers it or if we need something additional. I mean, whatever questions you have should be answered in time for the public hearing.
Right. Because I think the goal is that no one should be acting in a way that's causing any public nuisance on any of these side blocks, street takeovers, on anything that's, you know, ridable, operatable, that can cause nuisance or a street takeover. And so, I don't know, like, doing some research, some other towns were including, because there were problems, like I said, in California with electric, little, little, innocent little scooters that you might buy, like a 13-year-old, that moved up from a leg-propelled scooter that just wants a little neighborhood scooter. And they were, people were complaining, because they were going up and down the roads, on, on people's driveways, and doing things like that. So, again, it's, it's a gray area. I, I, there's so many different operations, but I, I basically think across the board, you just are trying to prevent a public nuisance in general, and have rights and ways to handle it, is the way I'm hearing it. So, what that verbiage should look like, I'm, I'm open to options, but I just want to make sure we're not missing something either. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr., do you, to Mr. Burt? When you look into that, can you see if the fees can be applied? Because I believe the state statute, what they just came out with, did not include that. So, I don't know if you can add the fees to all other.
That's why I want to check the enabling legislation.
Because that could become a problem, because they might not be able to seize or make it a violation to collect fees from it, because it's not considered a vehicle, so, per DMV. So, that's just what I would like to know, before we change to include all other things without the state saying, this is actually a vehicle. Thank you.
Counselor Russ?
Oh, I'm sorry. My question was the same as Counselor Parker's. I was looking at the, on page 14, the House bill states it requires violations of municipal ordinances regulating ATVs, snowmobiles, dirt bikes, motorcycles. So, I just wanted to know if it was even legal to add anything else, so that was.
I, I have a point of information, your question. Is there a part in here that happens if they're minors and how that fee will be applied? So, if this is like a 13-year-old or, I saw some other ordinances that were asking, like, the towns have to be specific. Specific about how the minor fees would be applied, and it would go to the, I believe, I have it in here somewhere, it would go to the Legal Guardian? Is that how this is reading, or how would that work? I guess is my, my question.
That would be my guess, but I wanted to confirm that. I'll confirm it.
Okay. And, and some were saying it should be written out in there.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That may be in Article six, section B, no person under 16. It has the Legal Guardian in apparent. My question to the town manager, through the mayor, if these devices are, vehicles are rented, who is responsible for the fines?
If you can show that, there's a caveat in there, that in the law, under that CGS, I think it's even referenced in here, but if, if your vehicle was stolen and you didn't know it, and it was used illegally, if somebody borrowed it and you had no idea they were going to use illegally, there is an appeal process to get them back, and you wouldn't pay that fine.
So, like, for a while, we had an electric bike company here that sold, had rented bikes.
If someone rented one out and broke the law, they would not be responsible.
The, the owner wouldn't be responsible?
Right.
The person that did it. And then in section D of that Article six, it does say, "Each all-terrain vehicle and dirt bike operated by an internal combustion engine shall be provided with mufflers." So, I'm wondering if that overrides the electric bike, because it's, it's mentioning internal combustion. But you're going to look into that anyways. But that's giving it, it's sort of like the cc classification thing. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Pacino?
To John Burt, through the mayor. If we changed absolutely nothing in this, oh goodness. And let it, let it ride and let Chief Fazario run with it? And let him come back to us and say, no, we need to tweak it here, we need to tweak it there? We can still do that, right?
Certainly, but it, you know, best to do it upfront, because it's a long process. But yes, if we, something doesn't work, they'll come back and say, can we tweak this?
So, we don't have to fix the world right now.
But in essence, we're basically creating a, a law for ground. Okay. So, I will be interested to hear back on that section, Article of exemption, but then in section two, about the moped, where it needs to have a valid registration, because if you drive it on the road without a valid registration, but that is something you can't do. So, we may want to bring that up at the public hearing. I'd also like to thank the Public Safety Committee for taking this on. I do recall this was brought forward because of the death we had in our community due to a street takeover. And somebody had died in our community, and it was very tragic. And I would hope that this will give the police department some kind of tools to be able to use if, in the event, they can apprehend people that are doing the street takeovers illegally in our community. I understand it is only, this is supposed to be used for, you know, people that are doing something that's illegal.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we cross some Ts, dot our Is on certain items that. So, but I thank you. I thank the committee, and I thank you for all your work that you've done on this, as well as all the assistance from the police department and town manager and everybody else who participated. So, I thank you very much for taking this on.
And I'll send a list to everybody of all the questions. I want to make sure I hit them all. So, I'll send a list out to everybody if you want to flag anything I may have missed or tweak.
And look, so, the motion on the floor is to have a public hearing on December 3rd. I think we have exhausted our conversation on this one. So, we'll put the question to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next is 5C, 2024 dash 873, Town Council 2025 Regular Meeting Calendar. This is on page 23. Counselor Jones, you want to take that one?
2024, 873, Town Council 2025 Regular Meeting Calendar. Motion to recommend a resolution approving the 2025 Town Council Regular Meeting Calendar as attached. So, move.
Led by Jones, seconded by Guyaski. All right.
Counselor Porterlin?
Through the mayor, through the town manager, what is the primary date? Does that affect any of our meetings?
I'm going to see a calendar write-off. Anybody happen to know when that is?
It's usually a point of information. Normally, it's the first.
Tuesday.
Tuesday in August or September.
This date isn't showing yet. If you want to caveat it with, to give me approval to shift the, one, if there is a conflict for the primary?
Point of information?
Your question?
My question, wouldn't we be able to just change it during a meeting and vote upon it? We can always make a motion? Am I correct?
We could, but I, I know this is the list we send to the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, it just becomes a special meeting after you do that. But yes, you certainly can.
So, I have an open election calendar, so I'm not seeing anything for '25 yet. So, I have an open election calendar, so I'm not seeing anything for 25 yet up here.
I'm fine with what the town manager said, it's just putting it in if it, you know, once he gets the date, if it affects our normal meeting time. We can just bump it to the Monday like we do with the election day. I think that's pretty fair.
How did we get the list last year?
What's that?
How do we have the list from last year, when we figured this out? We voted on it, and we adjusted it right then and there.
You adjusted it later.
Yeah.
I'll ask the clerk's office.
No, I think we, didn't we adjusted it during the meeting?
One of them, you adjusted something afterwards, though. What I'll do is I'll ask...
Point of information.
And there might even not be a primary, so we might not even have to worry. I mean, there might not be a...
Point of information, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If I recall correctly, we adjusted for the presidential primary date, because that was out, but we then had to readjust for a state legislative, or legis, state election primary, if I recall correctly.
Okay. Look, nobody has any issues with this? Any more questions, comments?
No, just that, so that's what we're going to do then, through the mayor, to the town manager, just wait to see when the date comes out.
I will ask the clerk if she happens to have any information. If she does, like, when you bring it to resolution, you could update it at that point.
Perfect.
And otherwise, tweak it later.
At the town council?
That sounds perfect, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, page 25, that'll be 2024-872, Town Council Committee of the Whole, 2025 Regular Meeting Calendar. Counsel Pacino, would you like to take that one?
Motion to recommend a resolution, approving the 2025 Town Council Meeting, Town Council Committee of the Whole Regular Meetings Calendar is attached.
Second. Moved by Pacino, seconded by Rusk. All right, are there any comments or questions? Counsel Pacino?
I would think everything you just mentioned for the previous motion would apply to this one.
All right, seeing no other hands, we'll take a vote. On 2024-872, Town Council Committee of the Whole, 2025 Regular Meeting Calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2024-871, Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee, 2025 Regular Meeting Calendar. That is on page 27. Counsel Merritt, would you like to take that one? Yep, page 27. We're on page 27, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Personnel Appoint and Appointments Committee, 2025 Regular Meeting Calendar, Motion to Recommend a Resolution Approving the 2025 Town Council Personnel and Appointments Committee Regular Meeting Calendar as attached.
Second. Moved by Merritt, Merritt, seconded by Rusk. Any conversation, questions? All right, seeing none? We'll take a vote on 2025-871. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero. Up next is 2024-877. This is on page 29. Town Manager Burt, would you like to have a discussion on this one, and lead us into it?
Sure, one moment, please. I thought I'd bring up the map, if you're interested. Sorry, I'm not the most readable, but, sure. One of the items on the priorities for the council is to the completion of the Sutton Park renovations, to discuss that. So, this is essentially an update, no, not necessarily any action needed tonight, but we'll be also talking about fund balance, as well as, at the next meeting, we're going to talk about available ARPA dollars. So, I anticipate this will likely come back, but of course, that's up to the council. But in terms of where we're at to date, we've been focusing on finishing up the skateboard park, which is, was the impetus of starting this whole thing, so that's fully funded. So, now we're moving on to what else is left to be done. Kind of going through the list, let's see, fitness station, do you always list what else is left to be done, so you can see it all? Number C, number two on the map, fitness stations, 62,00639. Grill stations, 32,00887. Basketball court, 260,00419. Entry wall and sign, 61,00320. Playground, 657,00484, 584. Playground seating area, 82,00968. Public art, not on the map, because it's in scattered areas, 36,000. Site furnishings, concrete benches, bike racks, Big Belly trash compactors, picnic benches, 45,00120. Shade trees, 90,000, and a three skate park pavilions for a total of 259,149. Altogether, those total 1,588,086 dollars. The numbers are a little bit older. Speaking with the consultant who did this, he recommended an 8% inflation adjustment to add to this, bringing it to a little over 1.7 million. And the priority at this point, at least from Parks and Rec standpoint, is the playground is the next priority.
Does anybody have any questions, or have any comments they would like to make on this?
Counsel James?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Burt, through the, through the mayor, where do we stand, or how are the things that we've done so far, coming in with their budget?
So far, good. I think everything's been fine so far. I think they just went through their permitting process, I think they were wrapping that up recently, last I heard a couple weeks ago, so I imagine, I don't know, weather-dependent, I imagine we'll start seeing some action, at least in the spring. And one thing I did, I neglected to mention that, is we did receive separate grants to do the restrooms, multi-use trails out there, so we've had some other funds separate from grants that we've used to also do some other things out there.
If, if these things are added into the mix, will they be done concurrently with the existing projects, or would this be added on, once those are...
I would imagine it'd be added on, since they're already gone through permitting, though, if there was, depending on timeline, yes, I can't say that for certain. My guess would be separate, but I can't say that for certain.
I mean, I'd love to see all of these, I mean, that was sort of the project, and this has been, been a terrific project with the community, and...
And a lot of these will be different vendors anyhow. You know, it'll be, you know, the people doing the skate park, or we're doing the playground, likely, so you're going to have a lot of different people involved in this.
Do you think the 8% inflation factor is adequate? Or the second question is, have costs come...
We wouldn't want to be holding anything on the inflation factor at this point.
Have the costs started to come down? I mean, no concrete just kind of zoomed on us.
We were just given that factor a couple days ago. I think it's relatively good if we're making decisions in the next few months. If we come back next year, then we'll want to ask for a new inflation factor.
You had said that the Parks and Rec had, that the playground is the number one priority, is there...
After the skate park, yes.
After the skate park. Is there a priority list of order of these items that you know of, or...
Well, you know, the playground is pretty poor condition that's existing there, it takes away generally, I think that by far is, you know, that along with the seating is number one. I think other things, li, I know lighting is a high priority, getting the lighting in, and, but I think everything else is sort of concurrent, whatever the council, I think, whatever the council thinks would be fine.
And, the town appropriated 1.4 million. So, the 1.4 million that we've already appropriated, that's what we've already appropriated, correct?
First, you did 1,500,000 back in the '22 budget, and then, and then later, an additional 1.46 million from low sub funds and capital project fund balance.
And then 1.3 from...
That was from the capital improvement project fund balance.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, I think the, was the 1 million ARPA? I feel like that was, that was ARPA, I believe.
I think some of it was ARPA money. So, we anticipate this maybe getting put into a bigger discussion when we talk about ARPA?
As you know, with all money is available, yes, and certainly ties into fund balance discussion, and not looking to rush anything, just an update, and it is a priority of the council that you voted on to make, to finish this project.
Yeah, I encourage it to keep moving forward, but in a, you know, also looking at our budgets and money, so, all right, thank you.
Counsel Gaiuski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question to the manager through the mayor, are you aware of any possible, because I know we got grant-funded for the multi-use trails and bathrooms, have, is there any other grants that have been being chased at after, just...
Not at this point, and we've never been able to find much in the way of playground type of things, or other things, you know, it's much easier. Now, the one thing I'll say, the restrooms were a state award out of the, you know, it was an infrastructure award from the state, I can't remember if it was bonded or not, but, hey, there's always that possibility for anything, but we've asked for certain types of things, like playgrounds in the past, hasn't been, I don't think that's a high priority with the state, per se. Trails are, you know, trails are the easiest thing to get grants out there, there's certain things that are, you know, like that, that are easier, things like these are a little harder. We could certainly, you know, each time it comes up with the state, we can always, you know, request some funds and see how we do, but, and just to mention too, we're getting ready to start fundraising on Quonac Plains Park Playground, that would be between 800,000 and a million, probably, for that.
And through the mayor...
Which would be a nice thing to ask for from the state, too, in one, you know, form.
May I also, but you pulled together a packet and gave it to our legislators for this last legislative session, asking for money for this park, because it was already taken care of and shovel-ready, so it was submitted to the state as already, and there was no, there was attempts.
Yeah, there have been attempts.
So, I'm going to use my time, see if I can come back to, I will state, though, that I do, for the record, I do agree that the playground is personally my top priority, so I am in agreements with the Parks and Rec Department staff, oh, I remember it now, thank God. Through the manager, kind of circle back on your, the Quonac Plains Park, that one is an ADA-compliance one?
It is.
And then, this one would not be an ADA-compliance one, correct?
I would want to double-check on that.
Okay.
I don't think that's the intent on this one, because it's quite a bit more expensive, and I think the intent is to redo the other one as ADA, but I'll double-check.
Okay. That's it for me, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
Thank you. I think this is a great project, I'm glad it's a top priority for the council, and we proved that by spending 2.5 million on it already. I just think if we're going to spend another, or look to spend another 1.7, I'd like to consider looking into bonding. And I know we spoke about bonding a few years ago, and my impression was our bonding situation was improving, we were paying down our debt, and the level was becoming significantly less, so I'd like to look at bonding, along with discussion of ARPA or fund balance. And the reason I say that is because I think the benefit of this park, my basic premise is if you're, if you're going to build something that's going to last 20 or 30 years, I use the matching principle, and that being said, I think the bonding, the taxpayer should pay over the same length of time, 20 or 30 years, to pay for the project, as opposed to having the taxpayer one year, all at once. So, I just encourage if we can look at bonding as a potential, if our bonding is in better shape, when we look to discuss this further. Thank you.
Oh, one other thing I meant, I meant to mention is that, if you remember, the original cost list had the paving, the parking lot, the town public works is going to do that, so, covered in their budget for materials and labor.
Okay. Well, it was a town council priority to bring this, trying to get this park to a conclusion, and have it redone. I think it's been a long time since some real money has been invested there. I know Parks and Rec has the priority as the playground, and I will be interested in seeing what kind of money we have remaining from ARPA, as well as the answer on how the ARPA can be spent due to certain stipulations, as well as, and potentials of us, because we already know that money has been given back from Grant Housing Authority, because they're not going to be able to use that funds, which could potentially help offset this, and our next topic of discussion will be the general fund balance. So, as it was stated, there's no motion that's needed tonight, but I would hope that, because it's a number one, one of our number one priorities, that we would keep this in the front of our minds, when we also think of some things that are coming up. All right. Moving on, we're going to go to 20...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Counsel Parker?
Since this is on our agenda tonight, as an open discussion, will we need to bring it back?
There's no decision being made on it, there's no vote, so it can come back anytime, because we're not making a decision at all.
Just letting the public know.
One way or the other, there's no decision tonight, it's just a discussion at this time.
Just want the public to, let the public know why it would come back.
All right, thank you. Up next is 2024-876, General Fund. Madam Mayor?
Point of, part of, point of personal privilege, our screen is just our, Counsel Parker knows, and it looks like Counsel McBride's.
All of them.
Are we recording?
The screens went out behind here on the counter.
Do you want to take a recess, maybe?
We can take a recess. It is 7:59, we'll take a 10-minute recess, and we'll be right back. We can take a recess. It is 7:59, we'll take a 10-minute recess, and we'll be right back.
Onto our last item, which is 2024-876, general fund, fund balance review. This is in our packet on page 31. There's a lot to it. There is no motion. And Mr. Burr, would you like to give the public an... Now we have the weather up. We have the weather. I don't know if that's broadcasting, but...
That's weird.
Okay, there we go.
The mouse must just drift over.
Would you like to give us a full rundown on what's going on with our fund balance?
The town currently has a fund balance policy that requires a minimum fund balance in the general fund of 15% and anything over 20%, 20% is the goal. So 15% is the floor, 20% is the goal. But the policy says anything each year over 20% the council will discuss whether it's appropriate to do something different with the money. And that's kind of the gist of this. But I was asked also to kind of go into where did the fund... Yeah, we've built up a healthy fund balance. At this point, we're approximately unaudited, but it should be close. About $40 million fund balance, which is 26.9% of the 24 budget or 25.77% of the current budget, which is really what we should use. So 25.77%. And in terms of... I put a lot of information in this, information how credit bond ratings work. We're pretty high up there at AA+ for Fitch, Moody's, AA1, and S&amp;P, AA+. Basically, we're at the second highest level. We're not in a position where we'd get into the highest one probably any time. But I put in page 33 a whole list of every year what contributed to our fund balance. This was a big year for '24 just because EB's expansion came on a year earlier than anticipated. We budgeted in for this year, but was not budgeting '24, so we had a $6.8 million boost. So that jumped up our fund balance quite a bit all at once. So I've been reviewing different policies out there, reviewing the credit ratings agencies, what they're looking at. And they're sort of going towards, instead of just looking at general fund fund balance, they're going towards overall major fund revenues and a higher percentage of major revenues. But where we're at right now, I think, is appropriate at the 15% and 20%. We've had no trouble maintaining our AA+ bond rating. We've been rolling notes every year and getting reviewed, so that is good. So my recommendation is that we stay where we're at, 15% floor, 20% cap. And then the council should have a discussion on where to go beyond that. Do you want to stay at the 20%? And if so, are there things that you want to allocate excess funds to? As we know, we have many, many needs out there. A lot of HVAC for the schools, bridges, resilience, all types of things. So that's kind of the gist of it, is it's really just, we're required to look at over 20%. We have... Let me pull up those spreadsheets. So if we use 20% at the 25 budget, we're just... We're about 8.95 million over 20% for our fund balance. So that's sort of, you know, the amount for discussion, assuming you don't want to go lower than 20%. So really, it's just for you... And I don't anticipate... This is the beginning of a discussion. I don't anticipate any action sites, just to start discussing as we're required.
Can you go further into three rating agencies and what they're looking for?
There are three major... There are a few minor ones, but there's three major credit rating agencies for bonds, and that is again Fitch, Moody's, and S&amp;P. And we went through the big process of getting re-rank when we did the schools. Now, the higher the ranking you have, the lower your interest rate, meaning over time for something like the schools. We have a good ranking, meaning we probably saved... If we stepped back some, we could have lost, spent millions more on the project. That's why it's very important to keep that ranking. Right now, we're poised to keep it. I think we're at a good level. If we reduced it any, we would risk that. So I think it's very important not to go below the 20%. And things are changing with the ratings agencies, though it's not clear cut as it used to be. They used to look almost... I mean, there's a lot of different factors. They'll look at median family income, and that's the one we're weakest on in town. That's the one that's likely to keep us from the AAA. But they look at a variety of things for... Do you have the ability to raise taxes? Some places, some states have restrictions on raising taxes. You know, you can only... You're actually capped. You can't... You guys have more flexibility. That counts in your favor. There's a lot of those type of things I look at, and each one's a little bit different. Now, Fitch looks at a scorecard. They just changed to a scorecard model. They look at financial position, demographics, economics. They look at what are our major industries, how stable they are. We have to give them a lot of information on electric boat, Pfizer, the Navy base, that type of thing. They want to... They delve into your whole economy to know how stable you are. Moody's has been shifting some. They've shifted more to, instead of just fund balance, they look at... They're going to the larger revenue resources, like including available fund balance ratio. They have major... They look at all the major funds, what's unassigned, what are your fund balances of all the major funds. They look at even capital projects, teacher pensions, all sorts of things. And we're doing fine across the board. But they're looking at, for our rating, 25 to 35% across the board, which we're sufficient at that right now, too. S&amp;P hasn't updated in a while. They still keep 15% listed as long as you do really well and everything else. Again, we need 20% to make up for the median family income to keep our second highest rating. So that makes up... Those two things balance each other. But I think 20% is what's sufficient as long as we have generally do well and have a good plan. They look to make sure... They also want to make sure you don't eat up your money faster here than wanting to get policies, you know how you're using it. It's okay to use your money, but have a plan for how you're using it. Don't just one-year say, "We're just going to drop it to 12% for no reason, just to save money." The other thing I looked at is the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA. They call for... This hasn't been updated in a very long time, but they call for two months of operating expenses, approximately 17%. So that's really the... To me, if you did anything, it'd be changing 15 to 17%. But the thing that... I'd like to have a little flexibility myself in there, and I've talked this through with Director Morrison. The... Let's see, as we know, eventually with the schools, with the Alliance District, eventually we'll come off that. We have an artificially inflated educational cost sharing. They kept a... We have a high rating, that high formula that should have been lowered over time, but they've kept us, held us harmless. Eventually, that's going to drop to at least several million a year. And if that happened in a hurry, let's say we suddenly lost, it could be even as high as 10 million. That'd be the only time I could see doing something like going down to 15% solely if you had a plan for, we're going to phase this in over the next number of years to soften the blow. But other than that, I don't see going below the 20% from anything besides an emergency like that. I don't see the need to go higher than 20% either, so I think it's okay. I think it's more of a discussion of are there things you think those monies could be put to good use to rather than remaining in the fund balance there? I will mention, though, they do review our policies, and we get good scores for management practices, so that's good. Council's doing well. They really like this policy, by the way. They reference it every time when we have currently.
That's great. Can you go into... People are going to wonder, why do we have the 8-point-something million dollars in excess? Can you go into the details of why this year we have so much more money in detail?
Sure. And just a little bit before that, a little bit of background. If you look on page 32, you see that chart on end-of-year general fund balance. That one's sort of interesting because you'll also see, a lot of the times, we're taking excess money and putting it towards offsetting taxes. So we are trying to pay down taxes where we think we have excess money. And I also want to say, I don't think these days are going to continue. We've got a lot of lucky things happen. This is not going to be the norm forever. There's going to come a time where we're basically coming out even each year, so I just wanted to warn you of that. But you can see, for instance, this year, we used 5 million fund balance carryover to towards to offset taxes. So over the... Since 2018, we've used about 12 and 1/2 million to offset taxes. But then, turning to the next page, there's a list by year of what contributed to increasing fund balance. For '24, you'll see again, 6.8 million was due to early receipt of electric boat expansion. We had... Building permits were greater by about 305,000. We've had some good building permit activity for the last couple of years. We'll see if that continues. Interest income has been really, like, much greater than we anticipated the last few years. Now, we're anticipating that's not going to remain, but that was about 1.9 million. Pilot came in higher by 825,000. Pilot funds from the state, payment lieu of taxes. Impact aid was greater by 2.1 million. And then our debt premium lowered by about 96,000. And then we had some different departments come in under, like legal was 140,000 under, finance was 235,000 under. As you might remember, we had a lot of... That seems a little high in that. But we had a lot of vacancies that were finally shored up. Public Works, 417,000. A lot of that all depends on the snow year. We've had two good snow years. Hopefully, that continues. Library, 111,000. Parks and Rec, 323,000. Board of Ed, now that actually stays with them now with the non-lapsing slash, shouldn't have been listed there. And then health agencies came in a bit lower. Returns on two. Let's see. It's pretty much that type of thing every year. Excess taxes last year for '23, 331,000. So that's more of the norm for excess taxes, 331,000, compared to this year being 6.8 million. That's a huge difference. Building permits were higher again that year, so it's more of the same pretty much each year. Some years, pilot came in higher than the state said. Each thing changes from year to year. We budget conservatively, so we don't eat up our fund balance, and that's the way I like to do things. But I also don't think you should build up too large a fund balance either. But we have tried to pay it, offset taxes with that. But we do have many, many needs, you know, some of these, including Sutton Park we talked about, Plains Park, we have the athletic fields, we have capital projects like bridges, resilience, school HVAC system replacements. And then, again, worrying about decline in educational cost savings. And we've been offsetting the last few years by 4 to 5 million dollars. That's, you know, something to keep in mind, too. That's probably not going to remain, you know, an ongoing thing forever, so we'll see how it comes out this year.
Okay, let's open it up to discussion. Councilor Gajewski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Manager Burr, I'm looking... I'm reading in our council packet here. It says that June 30, 2024, unaudited fund balance town general fund is approximately 4 million. That amount equates to 26.9% of the budget or 25.77% of the current FYE 2025 budget. If you look at the... Our budget... I have the town budget in front of me. It says the estimated fund balance at the beginning of the year was 38,394,973. Can you tell me how we got that extra, roughly 1.7 million dollars?
Well, part of it is eating up 5 million for offsetting taxes. You know, that's before you take money out for offsetting taxes and for this current year.
Okay.
And last year, we do that every year.
Yeah. And then... Okay, thank you. And then I want to flip over to page 32 of our council packet, and it said the net fund balance carried... Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Councilor Burr. Page 32 of our packet, it said the net fund balance carried forward was 40,97,524, which, if you divide it by the budget of 155,235,235,906, that would be 25.83%. And in our packet, it says the current approximate fund balance for FYE 2025 is 25.77. So I'm kind of curious where that extra 40,000 is. I think it's 40,000. That one's probably...
I'd have to look.
Okay.
Off the top of my head. In terms of this, it's kind of de minimis amount. It's a small amount. I'd have to look.
And then my next question is about impact aid. My understanding of the impact aid process of the town is the town puts up all the money upfront, and then if excess comes in, then it's balanced out by the town percentage, correct?
Say that again, please.
The... With impact aid, if we get excess money from it, we rebalance it because we put up the Board of Ed money.
We fund fully upfront, which isn't the case everywhere. We put, give all their money upfront, and then it just offsets what we give upfront.
Okay.
Rather than piecemealing it as much and seeing what comes in and then reducing the tax dollars, you know, that'd be the alternate. If you were going to wait to see what you get for impact aid, then you would reduce lit after the fact the tax dollars to balance it.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but in... This was one of the first years in a while... FY24 was one of the first years in a while we received...
About three years or so, yeah.
Okay.
It used to be more common. That type of thing has been going down, and the amounts have been going down over the years.
Okay.
And where that difference in money came from, by the way, it's because it was just a broad 40 million. Using that 40 million that was in that paragraph for the 25.77, whereas the actual carryover is the 40,97,524. That's the difference.
Thank you. Do you anticipate any large major projects coming to impact the town that we need to be saving in excess amount?
Well, depending on how it's funded, you know, what grants we get, there'll be some cost to be... Eventually, something will need to be done with HVAC in the two schools. You've got, you know, some are wants versus needs, of course. You know, athletic fields and things are wants versus... I mean, some would say needs, but, you know, compared to health safety, I mean. But, you know, there's a potential of the bridge for a couple of million dollars. There's always potentials of different things like that. And not to mention, one thing, I think I mentioned it here, but the former Fitch Middle. What are we eventually going to do with that? That's a huge amount of money. But that's also not immediate. You know, there's time to figure that out. But a bridge, you know, there could be bridge-type things, infrastructure projects that are more immediate. That's probably between athletic-type stuff like playgrounds, the infrastructure is the most important thing probably to put money towards. And resilience is going to be a never-ending need. You know, that's just going to increase every year as we get into it. You'll never be able to put enough money into resilience. You know, eventually, we'll need state and federal aid, but we should start saving up as much as we can, especially for an emergency.
So I just want to summarize real quick. Things that could be potentially impact, that could really deplete our general fund reserve account could be resiliency, the loss of ECS education funding, and infrastructure are like the three main concerns.
Yes.
And then, do you or the finance director have a recommendation of what number we should kind of cap at for this year? Or any, like, guidance? Or just follow the 20% policy?
We're comfortable... I'll just say, it's up to you, but we're comfortable with anything over the 20%. But keep in mind, if we suddenly don't make extra money this year, then you'll be in a position of suddenly not having potentially 4 to 5 million to put towards next year, as we hope. We'll come out, but every year, it's a hope.
So the advice I'm kind of getting is, don't handcuff ourselves.
Yeah.
All right. I'm out of time.
And also, let me just throw out there as just a point of information for everybody. I think tonight would be a night to have a discussion and understand all this and have just a full discussion on it, but not have any motion tonight because this can come back. If we do make a motion and we decide anything yes or no, it'll take six councilors to bring it back, and if you don't get the six, we will have the policy that we have and can't change it for a year. So I'm very open to having a full discussion on this. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Burr, through the mayor. So we have, just to clarify, on page... Excuse me, 31 at the bottom, you have the Fitch, Moody's, and the S&amp;P. Those are our current rankings, right?
Right, right. Our long-term rating. And again, the only thing higher than like the plus is the AAA.
And because of our minimum...
Well, with the... With our median, yeah, median area income, I've been told by the agencies and our financial advisor that we won't get the AAA unless that comes up.
And that's sort of saying that our... You can't... We don't have the financial backing to pay higher taxes and things like that.
Right. There's a kind of cap on it, yeah.
Cap on it. Do you have a comfort... There's Fitch, Moody's, and S&amp;P. Is there one that you look at more than the others when you're sort of saying, is one that you say, "Yeah, that's the one I really sort of put my hat on as opposed to the other two"?
No, because they, you know, really, they're asking, we prepare the same packages for all of them, and then we spend a couple hours in agreement with them, going through all the answers. And they ask me questions that we didn't cover in our... We put a really big packet together for them when they do the ratings. Now, in terms of our... We've been doing those yearly rolling of the notes, which is, you know, a short-term, one-year notes. I believe we've... We'll... For that, you don't need to have all three. When we do schools in that level, you want all three ratings. When we roll a note, we only need one to be updated, and I believe we've been doing Fitch on that. I think they're kind of some point ago, it's early. But they're all, as you see, we rate that AA1 with Moody's is the same thing as AA+ for the other two. They're just called different. So we're right, same with all of them, so not particularly.
So you're comfortable with all of them, and they're all basically saying the same thing, even though they sort of had...
They're all saying the same thing, yeah.
They have different sort of criteria.
Yes, we're doing very well.
And the... Excuse me. The excess tax revenue of the 6.8 million that came in this year because of EB, what is the... What would be the normal tax amount? Is this an odd amount of money that sort of dropped into our...
It was a major expand. You know, of course, you know, there's... There, you know, the state takes the bulk of the money. But, you know, that was a, you know, what was that, like a billion-dollar project?
It's a billion dollars. But as we move forward, like, next year, will we also receive a 6.8 million?
It's already built into our budget, so not excess, no.
Okay, so...
Yes, we will get it, but we're already accounted for.
We've accounted for it.
Yes, yeah.
It just came... It came early.
It came one year earlier than we were told. Now, next year, we'll have 1 to 1.2, like, from Triton Square. There'll be, you know, there's other stuff coming online, of course, and sometimes other things go backwards.
You know, I'm just sort of looking at that 8.9. So if we didn't... If we hadn't had the 6.8, that would be basically $2 million less.
Right.
So it's sort of artificial just because it came built into it.
Yeah. It's nice, but it's not an ongoing...
But it's not sort of reality.
Yeah.
It's not really a reality, because next year, it'll be built into the budget, so... Do you have a sense... I know we've had many conversations about the bridge, our orphan bridge project, that we are going to end up having to pay for that?
I'm still hoping not, you know, and I want to fight as much as we can to not. But, you know, it's the state, so we'll see. I was told by... Greg had heard recently that they're still discussing that at the DOT, so nothing's been determined.
If I look at, on the first page, the 25.77 in our current... I just want to sort of understand, when we apply, like, this year, we applied $5 million out of our fund balance. Is that... If you took 5 million out of this, what would that 25 be? I mean, would it... I don't know if I'm raising my question right.
If instead of like 40 million, if we had 30 million or 35 million?
35 million? Is that how it... Am I... I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this question, but is that as we move, like, next year?
It'd be about 4 million excess we'd have then, if we only had 35 million.
So next year, so like the previous year, 2024, we used the 26. This year, we use the 25. 26, will it drop 5 million out of that if we use the same thing?
I'm hoping not, especially with some new stuff coming online.
Okay.
You know, but it might go back to, if you look in '21, we used 2.8 million. You know, my guess is, we're not going to stay at 5 million. It's going to... But I hope we can do well enough to do something.
So the reason we use 5 million was to sort of help the taxpayer, bring the...
Yeah, with the school budget coming in, so we offset that some.
So it's nice having that money there. It gives us flexibility when it comes to budget season to do it. So I'm very comfortable with where you're kind of going, 15 and the 20, and then looking very carefully at that excess. It's not just something we can sort of scoop up and pay. It's... We have needs that sort of need to be carefully weighed if we're going to sort of dip into that.
Right. There's always more needs than money.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you. My opinion is that 27% or 26.9 is too high, so I think I at least agree that we need to do something with that at some point in time. And I did a little research on this topic. So one thing, I think, the floor, the 15%, what the GFOA recommends is no less than two months of expenditures or revenues, which is 16.67%. So I think if we were to review anything, I think that should be the floor level. However, that guidance from GFOA was probably seven or eight years ago, and I did send to Town Manager Burr this afternoon, and I know it was late, some recent information from GFOA. It's a 30-page document. It summarized a couple pages that I sent out as well. So we haven't been ready to review that for this evening. But in summary, what it does state is that GFO has come out and said that all municipalities should review their fund balance policies because their guidance that previously had the 16.67%, and didn't say 16.67%, it said at least two months, 16.67%, is that they believe people should review their fund balance policy to consider such factors as natural disasters, recession's impact on revenues, cybersecurity, volatility in the world, economic disruptions, severe weather, public health expenses, public safety challenges, lack of public trust in governments, and so forth. And what they're recommending is that especially areas who have significant coastal resilience concerns should review their fund balance and determine two things. One is they think they should consider it to be a higher amount, but more importantly, it should be arranged to allow some flexibility for the governments, the administration to do what they need. So my thought after doing some review is that I would like to consider, you know, more of a range of like 16.67 to 25. It wouldn't stifle Town Manager Burr's hands. It would give him some flexibility to do something. But I think, you know, the 35% as Town Manager Burr said was for AAA, and I don't think that's what we're striving for. But even a double A by Moody's and the others is between the 25 and 35%. So I think the 25% is more a likely scenario. I think with potential issues that come down the road, I think we should be increasing that fund balance. And I'm not a fan of overtaxing the residents, so I'm not saying to tuck it away. But I think if the guidance is telling us we should be increasing and looking at it for numerous reasons, that's something we should consider. So I'd be interested in looking at, one, a broader range to allow more flexibility, but also to look to see if we can increase that fund balance based upon the guidance. And I know, as Town Manager Burr said, the rating agencies, it's only about 20 or 30% that they look at the fund balance as a percentage of the total rating, but it's still a factor. And I think if we're under 20%, that wouldn't be a great thing. So I'd be supportive of increasing it to a range between 16.67 and 25%. Thank you.
Town Manager Burr, did you have a response?
I was just going to say, even if you move money into infrastructure, that still counts towards the 35% or 25, 35%. They count all those. It's not just general fund. So anywhere you have in these fund balances tally up together. So I think at least it shows the public you have some thought about it, you know, that it's still just as flexible.[1714.16] about it, you know, that it's still just as flexible. You could just move it out. You're just earmarking it over there. But it just shows you have a plan. That's, you know, that's the only reason I went, didn't think. We also went through all this with our financial advisor. Also, he didn't see the need to go down to twenty, as long as we were doing some of these other things, but it's entirely up to the council.
Yeah, I didn't mean twenty in just the general fund, in the general, overall fund balance, reserve fund balance, whatever you call it.
A point of information. Just one moment. I would like to note that Counselor McBride had sent out to the council some, well, through the town manager, some documents, and I wrote them down so that we could, um, there is GFOA, which stands for Government Finance Officers' Association. So it's GFOA recommends government rethink their reserve policies, as well as, should we rethink reserves, a multimillion-dollar question. So those are the articles that were sent out to us, and it was sort of late in the, you know, it was like two-something this afternoon, and I did not get a chance to read all of it. But I did start. Counselor Borland, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just threw the mayor to, for Counselor McBride, I just want to make sure I understood what he said. What was the percent that he's recommending that we be at?
The article didn't come out with a, with a recommendation. They wanted you to rethink. And if you read through it all, you're going to see a lot of different pieces of information on what you should consider. But they, the guidance that came out recently, I think it was two thousand and three, actually, kind of superseded the guidance of the at least sixteen-point-six-seven percent, which is two months. They're saying, you know, the sixteen-six-seven came out eight, ten years ago, and now this new guidance came out and said you should rethink your policies, and maybe not change it. I'm not saying, it doesn't say to change it, but it says to rethink and consider all those factors I, I went through. And it kind of hinged upon, you know, you look at your area, if you're more prone to flooding, let's say, then maybe you should put a little bit more in there. It's really dependent upon your area. But they're really just encouraging everyone to rethink their policies.
All right, so, and a point, just to back that, back up, a point of information. Did you recommend a percent that you think we should be at, or you're just using that number as just a talking point?
I, I would recommend a broader range to allow flexibility to go from sixteen-point-six-seven, which is their lower band, to twenty-five percent, which is a, which is a higher band. But to allow flexibility where if you're at twenty-one, you're, you're fine, depending upon the needs of the town.
All right, thank you for clarifying.
But it also doesn't have to be just general fund. It also could be like capital projects, as long as it's not allocated to certain CIPs.
Right, because it's also, one of them is saying that we should be at, up to thirty-five percent.
Right.
Twenty-five to thirty-five percent.
Basically, for all your unassigned.
All unassigned.
Yeah.
Well, Moody's is actually saying for AAA, excess above thirty-five percent for AAA, but that's not realistic.
Not, and I don't disagree with the council in terms of, you're also looking at putting some for infrastructure and other things, yeah.
Anybody else want to jump in? You're going back to back?
Well, my time was up, so.
You're going back to back?
I'll just add a couple of other comments. Well, I'll wait for more people. Go ahead, sorry.
Anybody else want to jump in there? Okay, you want to go back to back?
Well, I was just going to say, back to Town Manager's point, on page forty-nine of our budget book, we had all those, we have all those reserve balances that a quick look, you know, maybe the fleet reserve needed some funding, maybe the technology replacement. So that's what you're referring to, right, is don't put all the basket into fund balance, but also fund some of the reserves, whether it's capital, capital infrastructure, or, you know, capital reserve, or fleet reserve, whatever it is, that total fund balance could go up to twenty-five percent.
For instance, we know we have a wide variety of uses for the capital projects and for infrastructure and things. That would be the, like, the primary one to me to boost the fund balance. But, you know, not just to use it, what I want is just go to budget, okay, let's just use it up. It's, you know, to hold it and keep it a little more loose for important things that come up and have a well-reasoned, thought-out decision if you want to use some of that for that particular item.
Point of information.
Your question?
To the Town Manager, so our current number of the twenty-five-point-seven is the entire?
It's just the general fund.
It's just the general, it's not counting the?
Doesn't count the fleet, or any capital. We don't have much to cap for right now, but, yeah.
Is there, do you have a percentage of what that is?
I don't know, because they even get into teachers' pensions and all. There's, well, if you go to Moody's, Moody's gets into a whole lot of it. I don't have a quick way of, I mean, I could have Dee do what she could for the next time out of our last audit, for things she could pull out of there.
Might, might be good information, just to look at the big picture.
And she had a whole discussion, you know, we've had discussions, what would, in some things changed. At one point, capital projects didn't count towards this. They changed that over time. The auditors didn't count that anyways. But, so we'll get the latest guidance from the auditors and see what we can come up with.
Are you all set? Counselor McBride?
Thanks.
You still have two minutes and thirty-one seconds.
Good, thanks. I spoke enough.
Okay, Counselor Jones?
Can you just elaborate a little bit on why teachers' pensions would be highlighted as opposed to municipal town pensions?
I just saw it listed among the things, under Moody's paper, under Moody's.
I mean, I would think.
Item, information.
I would think it would be all pensions. I mean.
I'm sure it probably does, yeah. It includes all major funds.
Okay.
And quick point of information, and the reason being?
That's why I don't know.
Is it because all these items in reserve, if there was a massive emergency?
Yeah, basically.
Like, just let's say we're Asheville, North Carolina, and we need money, we can wipe out all these reserves that we have to use for our absolute emergency.
And technically, even stuff you have, like for CIPs, even if you've allocated it for emergency, you would put those on pause and pull up money from everything unspent that you could.
We would just sweep for emergencies.
Yeah, we'd sweep everything in an emergency.
If there was horrendous.
Yes.
Emergency, it's, so the reason being is, that's what they're trying to say, have this money, is that correct, have the money held? But if ever there's a horrendous emergency, God forbid we ever have, that we can?
Yes. And in the past, the ratings agencies didn't really understand, they really just looked at general fund balance. That's changed in the last few years, where they're now looking, they realize now there's more flexibility than they realized. And that's the one thing I don't, yeah, in terms of the base, I still kind of like the fifteen percent just for an emergency. Because what I don't want to do is, let's say we have an emergency, and we decide we need to go down to the fifteen, but it says seventeen, well, we're, we'll still get deemed with the rating. You know, I'd just like to have a little flex, you know, twenty percent should really be where we should be at. That should be, it's only for emergency you go down to fifteen. So I'd almost count twenty as the floor, but fifteen for like an absolute emergency. Now, obviously, it's an absolute emergency, do whatever. You could, you could throw the policy at any point. But I just want to stick to policy as much as possible for the rating agencies. They just want to know you have a policy and you follow the policy.
Right. Do you have more questions?
So I think, just for me, or for the council, having a better understanding of the teacher pension issue versus, and/or the, the town pension issues, because we have pensions.
I'm sure if it's one, I'm sure it's both. I just thought, there was a listing of examples of things that I look at, and that was one of the things listed.
And then a, looking at, Counselor McBride here has the listing of all the reserve funds, just a better understanding of what we do have as reserve funds, so where we currently sit would be helpful, I think, in this overall discussion. I mean, I might see changing.
And there's a bit of a difference, too. There's some of these things, you know, yeah, we have flexibility, but I would only want to use them in a true emergency. So there's like kind of two levels of things to think about with fund balances, you know. I don't really want to count, you know, fleet towards really our fund balance. Yes, in an emergency, but not in normal circumstances. So it's kind of, you know, there's a lot of layers to this.
Have you done any thinking on what sort of, what a true emergency is? I mean, Asheville certainly was a complete disaster, but, you know.
Well, an example would be, you know, if a bridge fell, that's a major bridge, you know, nobody can get to GLP. That's, you know, hopefully we'd have federally, obviously. But sometimes you have to fund stuff in an emergency and then get reimbursed after the fact.
I mean, we've seen some examples in the last several weeks, and we'll probably see some more in the next couple days of, you know, things that have happened, so.
Because, you know, sometimes it takes a while to get that federal declaration. You might have to be committing to a lot of money before that.
Do you use any of that in sort of your, how you make your decisions on things, those kinds of, you know, you have a checklist of things that go on, is the federal, you know, is the federal declaration of emergency area or not? Do you, is that something that you think about when you're?
Yeah, I, I think about it. And like I said, as long as I agree with David, Councilor McBride, that as long as we, I think we do need more than just the twenty percent, but it could be in infrastructure and others. And then to lower that, to go beyond it, you'd want to really think about it. I just don't want to bind this up too much to the point where you realize, oh, we have a little flexibility, we really need to take this money. It's not emergency, but then, I don't want the credit rating agencies then to see, oh, they didn't follow their, you know.
Or who are you being driven by? You're being driven by the credit rating agencies, or you're being driven by your ability to make decisions, manage your town? So, okay, all right, thank you.
But I will bring, I anticipate, I don't know if you want this on the next agenda, but whenever we come back, we'll bring some more information back.
All right, I have a few questions myself. So, when we are on page thirty-one, no, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, let's just say thirty-one. When you said the twenty-five-point-seven-seven, if we took out, we, we would also have to take out of that number, the Board of Ed, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, because?
Yes.
That's actually going to go into their nonlapsing from, so we don't get that money. So when you had mentioned it was?
So it's probably a little bit less.
Yeah, so it'll be like, what did you say? It was eight-point-nine-five? And if you subtracted that, it would be, we're looking more at close to eight-point-six-nine million instead.
Right. And, you know, and things could shift one way or another by a little bit more, too, because we're not audited yet. So it could switch, you know, shift a little bit, one way or the other.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. I thought, maybe I'm incorrect, that that Board of Ed unassigned balance was going to start six-thirty of twenty-five.
Is that what it is?
I think so, because I think they just passed legislation.
Okay, so maybe that's.
Yeah, so I think that's accurate, things are following you.
I thought it was this year.
They, they passed it this year, but they passed it in what, March?
But I thought it went into effect the summer of this year.
I thought there were plenty on.
Maybe we can look into that one?
Yeah, it could be incorrect. I thought it was.
We can look into that. I'm not trying to say I'm an expert, but I thought I looked it up, and I thought it was this year.
I'll find out.
Okay, thank you. So then on page, our page thirty-two of our packet, in section two, when it talks about Moody's, it talks about restricted funds do not count towards the fund balance. Can you tell me what you would consider restricted funds?
Give me one second, and I'll actually tell you. There's actually definitions for these, sort of, non-spendable, there's different levels of restrictions. You've got non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned for different things. And what we have right now is unassigned in the fund balance. Now, non-spendable fund balance is when there's, the balance represents amounts that cannot be spent due to form, inventories, prepaid amounts, amounts, basically, you've already got committed, they're already committed essentially, but, and this one, I need to learn more about this one. That one's the weirdest one to me. That's how it reads. This balance represents amounts that cannot be spent due to form, e.g., inventories, prepaid amounts, amounts required to be retained in perpetuity. Restricted is, balance represents amounts constrained for a specific purpose by external parties by laws. You get a grant from the federal government, they say it will, you shall use it for this, that's a restricted. Committed is when you commit, town and RTM commit funds. That's what committed is, when you say, we're going to do the CIP, that's committed funds. Assigned fund balance is one slight step down from that. That's basically without the, you don't have to have the RTM involved in that. It's more of using my powers, your powers, that you sets aside money for something and assign it to something. But it hasn't gone through, you know, within your scope and not through as extensive of a process. And unassigned is just, you know, fully spendable money.
So you said the uncommitted is like where we would put something in reserve? Is that what you're saying? That means we're not spending?
Unassigned.
Unassigned?
Yes.
All right. And did you say uncommitted? What was?
I didn't say, uh, committed, not uncommitted.
Not uncommitted. And committed was what?
It was non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned fund, assigned, unassigned.
And what is committed, one more time?
Uh.
CIPs?
Basically, it's when you've gone through the full budget process to dedicate it something.
All right.
A point of information?
Your question?
Can he just send what he's reading off of?
Yeah, it's right in our audit.
Because it's a lot of notes to take at this hour. If you could just send what all those definitions are, it'd be helpful.
Yeah.
I agree.
It's right off our audit.
So, and then you're going to come up, and you're going to tell us what the two months of expenses will be? You'll give us an answer on that one? Is that what you said?
Say it again?
When it, when it was, it was discussed earlier, to have two months of town expenses, and what that dollar amount would be, that's, should be the floor.
Oh, the sixteen-point, yeah. The sixteen-point-six-seven. It's a, well, at twenty, like if, if it was, if you use seventeen percent, it's twenty-six, a little over about, a little under twenty-six and a half million, which would leave about thirteen and a half for an overage. That's at seventeen percent. So it's close, though, it's very close.
So if you had it at, let's say, seventeen percent as your floor, and potentially put twenty-two percent as anything over twenty-two, we would consider changing? That would up our policy?
Right.
By two percent on each level? And then we can, if, if they want us to have like a twenty-five percent at the minimum in all, we can count other things as well in our reserves?
Correct. And I can bring you a spread to you with some of these different numbers of what is twenty-one, what is twenty-two, or, you know, some of that.
Right. I personally think it's very important that we keep our bond, our, our credit rating high, because there's a potential to be bonding, and there has been discussions, even just this evening, from Counselor McBride, who was talking about bonding. And, and then there's also other things in our community that we may want to bond for in the future. So I think it's always important to keep the bond rating high, and I think this is a great conversation to have. I want to make sure our community understands, this isn't because of overtaxation. This is because we had electric boat come online early, sooner than we expected, and we received taxes of like one, six-point-eight million dollars is the major chunk of this money that we sort of unexpected, as well as some other things that were unexpected. And potentially even the building permits being over by three-hundred-and-five-thousand, which could have been Trident Square, maybe even, for all we know, for all the permits that they had to go through. And that's a potential that even for the twenty-five budget, we're looking at Trident Square coming on, hopefully, as well as, and you've applied for the grant for, it's not a grant, it's the application for, what is the Enterprise Zone? Is that correct?
Yes.
And that could potentially be how much?
Yeah. I can't say off the top of my head, I forget. I'd have to look it up. Several million, certainly, though.
Okay. Counselor Borland?
And just a note on the Trident Square, it won't be this current budget year, it'll be for the twenty-six budget year.
Twenty-six.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Borland?
I think they're hoping to get some open by in spring, so.
Counselor Borland?
Um, yeah, I, I think it's very important, just like, you know, as a person who strives to keep my credit score up to date and high, so I can get the best ratings on everything. You know, I may be a little obsessive over my credit score, actually. I think it is important to, you know, when looking at a municipality like the size, other things that we have to look at, too. I, I didn't have time to read, unfortunately, Counselor McBride's papers, because I worked till five and then got stuck in traffic on my way here. But I will review it. But some of this research I did prior to this meeting, you know, other factors and forms, I looked at other towns, things we have to consider is that we do have a major installation here of a, of a naval base that's federal. And, you know, there could be, I hate to say it, you know, with all the things going on in our country, there, you know, we, we are, you know, we do house, you know, submarines, and, and there's some risks that do come with that as our community. Federal government would probably step in, but we do need to prepare and be always ready, because we do house that. It has its pros, but it has, when it can be bad, it could be bad. And that's all I'm going to say. And so with that, we are, the naval base does fall in the jurisdiction of the town. I know EB falls in the jurisdiction of the city, but we do need to consider that. So I guess the Town Manager, when looking at that, is there any ratings and things that they talk about for major disasters, nuclear leaks, I mean, crazy things that I hate to even think about or say out loud? Are those considerations when looking at the reserve as well, having such a major installation like that?
That's on us. They don't look at that. They, that's on us to look at it.
Right. No, I'm asking, are we considering that when you're looking at what you might need?
Right. I mean, yeah, I mean, there could be all kinds of things.
Yeah. So I just, you know, making sure that we're ready for any major disaster. So I, I could be comfortable, you know, just my research, I, the number I had in mind that I keep twanging over was like eighteen percent bottom line, was my number, and where the other number at the top could be, I'm not sure. But I was looking at eighteen percent. Looking at the fact that we think that seventeen is comfortable, but eighteen to me, because of the fluctuating things and inflations, I was leaning towards seventeen and a half to eighteen. But again, still looking at all the numbers. And, but I also want to make sure that we're providing the need that we have. I hate to see numbers like this this high. I understand the reasons, but now we have to come up with a plan. Consistently, the newer, or not the newer anymore, the, the second newest, elementary schools are using AC and heat alternating to create their own mitigation. Like at Northeast Academy, they're turning the AC on and then the heat to help with moisture problems there. So when looking at infrastructure, you know, I start to think like we have to fix those HVACs at those schools. That's at the forefront. That's not a caveat, that is a need. And then I start looking at like, you know, the schools and our infrastructure there when providing high-level education. We need to look at the school's infrastructure for sporting fields and things like that. But I look forward to more discussions on this and see where we can go. But I look forward to the information that you'll send over. Thank you.
Counselor Gasky?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe Counselor Jones asked this, but Manager Burt, if you could provide, it is page fifty-three of our budget book. if you could provide, it is page fifty-three of our budget book, if you could provide a updated estimated fund balance of all these numbers right here?
Page fifty-three?
Yes, that would be appreciated, and then?
Of twenty-five budget?
Of twenty-five budget, yeah, yeah, I just kind of want to, part for me, I kind of want to have an idea of where, where we're standing across all the board, and then, is it possible to be, I know we have excess revenue right now, but is it possible to pay a bond early, or would that be advised against?
There's restrictions on when you could pay a bond, they're not callable yet, there are, bonds usually have a timeframe late in it, or later in it, where you can't call them, with penalties often paid off, but we can't do it right now, no.
Okay, yeah, I.
I just asked that, just, it was a good idea, I just asked that, they said there's nothing we can pay in advance right now on.
Yeah, because I think the grant in twenty-twenty-five plan, we pay until twenty-forty-five, and then, this was brought up during the budget session a lot, about using excess revenue fund, and we heard a lot of other bodies in town saying it, we have the authority to initiate that, right? No other body has the authority to initiate using excess general fund at any time?
To say again, like, just fund balance to me?
Yeah.
Well, if you're going to expend it, then obviously beyond the budget, then RTM.
Yeah, the RTM could say, but we have to initiate it, correct?
Yeah, you have to initiate, think not, yes.
Okay, yes, all right, that was my question, yep, yep, so I just want to put that on the record, and then, Councilor Jones mentioned earlier about teacher pensions, and I also wanted to discuss, I also wanted to have some, did that also include town pensions as well?
That was just one example given under their list, and I don't know what information we'll have on it, and the whole point is, we just need to have overall in the twenty-five to thirty-five percent range for all of them, so it doesn't, you know, if we hit that with other things, then it's not much of a concern.
All right.
We'll pull everything we can pull, I just.
And through the mayor, to the manager, was there any discussion on health insurance and possibility of, was that, could be a factor at all with changing rates and stuff like that, or no?
If we switched or made some changes?
Yeah, I'm, what I'm thinking is, if we had a change in negotiations with the union, like they give a, one union gives a different percentage than the other?
Yeah, you know, it doesn't make much of a change, a one small change, you know, you know, usually they don't like real quick changes if you change, you know, the type of insurance or carrier that you have, and we're going to talk about that on November twelfth, get a healthcare update and talk through it, though most other options, we, the town would actually go up, but we're probably not switching, at least for the town proper, but.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'm glad we're going to be discussing that on November twelfth, that'd be really good, um, that is it for me, and I yield back, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilboard line?
Um, great, thank you, you know, other things I've been reading before the meeting was really looking at, you know, it did talk about capital improvement projects, and towns can use excess funds to finance capital improvements and things like that, also, it, it did say the, some policies, some good things is making sure, like, how to replenish funds could be part of your policy, too, we're talking about mainly how we expend them, but like, there is some good thoughts out there and things I've read in other towns, just reading some examples online and reading, is they also talk about replenishment, and that's also included in their policy about ways that they want to replenish it, and how, and a lot of foreshadowing, it's not something we should do really quickly and make decisions, but we should really be thinking, we're coming into our new budget season, so this is a good time, but we should be really thinking about what is our town liabilities that we know of, what's coming up, what other debts have, is there any legal things, like, I know before Pfizer, you know, needed building changes and we lost taxes, like, we really should see a good map of what is coming up in that year when setting our, our policy. Granted, we don't want it to go down from the previous year, and we always want to see improvements on that, but we, we should be fiscally responsible when looking at that, and a lot of that is driven by knowing what's coming up, what's coming in, what's coming up, what needs to go out, and what's going on in our town that needs to be paid or funded infrastructure-wise, so that is critical when, when looking at that, and that's, just like we do in our, to me, it's what you do in your own house in financial management, it's like, okay, I'm going to get a new car, I need this, I need a new roof, I need siding, you know, the same thing for the town, so I, my hope is that at the next meeting, too, you know, we can kind of see what are those critical, what is that critical mass right now in our town, what is the wants, what is the needs, and what is absolutely, like, for me, I think the HVACs at the schools is one of those critical things, it's a newer building, and it's just been sitting for, I don't know how long, but there probably are some other things, and in some people, some towns actually even get the pulse of the community and see, you know, what things, here's where we're at and where we're going, so that's just me, I just like to at least see a little bit more foreshadowing of like, where we're, what our needs are, where we're, we're lacking, what things have been pushed down the road, and not during budget season, but now, like, what things are, you know, pretty critical, because that does change, knowing that we have this extra six-point, you know, whatever coming from, that hit our account, maybe we would have put it on other things, but we didn't know, so it would be great to have that discussion, it's not just a number, it's not just a set number that we set, it's what is coming up that makes us feel comfortable, because we don't want to tie our hands, lock up too much money, and then not be prepared for something else, so, I think we're doing that now, and I think that's great, but I'm excited to see, like, what other things, and that would be really critical, and other things I saw were towns, you know, asked other departments, you know, fleet reserve, and other areas that have, have broken items and things that need replacements, so, I don't know, just, any, any information we can get ahead of time would be helpful, thank you.
Just a note on the replenishment, I was looking at that a little bit, taxes are our only quick way of replenishing, and I hate to lock that into policy, just because what if you had some disaster, and what do I have to, year one, absolutely have to make it up, you know, sometimes I, I'd like flexibility on that, but.
Okay. So, I, if I take it so that we have like this, in a ballpark figure, I'm just going to say, if we could move up, potentially move up the floor up to seventeen, move the other baseline up to twenty-two, from twenty to twenty-two, and then see what we have as what's remaining, and then I would also be interested in putting some money into reserves, such as the infrastructure, where we do have potential bridges that we would have to take care of potentially, as well as other things, like you've discussed the AC for the Board of Ed, they're going to need some money, and although I've heard that they can space it out over five years, that's going to be something we're, they're going to be probably asking for, so we should, maybe should be prepared for such a thing, so maybe we can put some money into reserves for that, as well as resiliency and sustainability, I think it is wise to put some money into that as well, because we do have a task force that's working on things, and they said it's going to take them eighteen months to come back to us with a list, but, of things that are going to help our community, but that will also have some money there, and not just to respond in an emergency, but to start being proactive on taking care of some of these things, instead of us as a council being shocked when we see the sticker price, and at least we'll have some money set aside, because I'm sure these are not inexpensive items, and with that said, I'm sure we will have some money left over, and I think the council should be thinking about some of those things, as well as maybe even bringing us the CIP list, because there were many things that we didn't fund this year, because we were, I'm not going to get into the details, but because of our budget situation, but maybe we can look at our CIP list for the twenty-five budget and see some of the things that maybe we can take care of, as well as, after we talk about the ARPA money next council meeting, and then the topic we just talked about as one of our goals with Sutton Park as well, there might be some funding there left over to help with that as well, because that is the town's, the, basically, the town's park, other, you know, our biggest park in our, in our community, so, I thank you for putting this all together, it is a lot of information, it's a lot to digest, I'm glad we had a very good conversation here, a lot of things were brought to the table that I am very interested in, and I'm glad everybody shared their thoughts on it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. A motion to adjourn by Parker, seconded by Rusk, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, that passes nine to zero to zero, it is now nine-twelve, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, and drive home safe.